Hi, good evening, everybody. We're going to get started. Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn exec and re-enter public. Xavier, in a second, from Tom, all in favor? All right, if you would, please join us for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom? All right, just a few quick things. If, in case of emergency, we have exits to the sides and to the back, please just make your way calmly to the exits. As always, this building and all of our buildings are smoke-free, so no smoking. All right, and we're going to go right to some approvals. So, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve minutes from the meeting of the Huntington U F S D Board of Ed dated February 3rd, 2020. Can I get a motion? From Tom, in a second, I have from Michelle, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, we have some FYIs. We have an FYI of budget appropriation reports for general school lunch and special aid funds as of 1/31/2020. We have an FYI of budget transfers, and FYI of revenue status reports as of 1/31/2020. And that brings us to the warrants. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants which were certified for payment on February 12th, 2020. Can I get a motion? I've got Christine, and a second from Tom, all in favor? Excellent. All right, folks, so, board member communications and announcements. Would anybody like to start? Christine, I'm looking at you. Okay. I'm trying to think. Had the pleasure of attending the Finley Drama Club production of, what was it again? Alice in Wonderland. It was so adorable. Very, 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 very good job. Congratulations to them.
Was the Arts and Ed fundraiser in between since our last meeting?
I did not attend that, but I believe it's in.
Oh, I did. Okay, you did.
Okay, so there was an Arts and Ed fundraiser that many of us attended. It was at the Founder's Room at Paramount, which is just the most cool and excellent location for a fundraiser. It was a great night. We had a lot of fun, and hopefully they raised a lot of money because Arts and Ed brings programs to kids of all ages and grade levels in our school district, and so it's a really important organization to support. And we had a great night there. And I'll also mention, as long as I've got the mic, that I was at the concert for the high school band, and they were extraordinary, I have to say. And, I mean, every performance was just excellent, but I have to give a shout-out to the one that was done by the ninth and ta- the junior band. Did a song called "Nostalgia," and one of the kids had put together a slideshow of photos of the kids from when they were young for each of, and it was just a weep fest. And, like, in the nicest way, but I really, like, almost couldn't pull myself together by the end of that song. But, um, it, again, just, those programs are just tremendous, and I don't know if the students realize how much the parents really enjoy it. You guys are so talented, and it's just a true pleasure to attend the performance like that. So I want to thank the music department and thank the student performers. They were excellent. And...
Yeah, I was going to mention that, too.
Oh, pancake breakfast.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, okay, so...
Did you eat pancakes?
I did eat pancakes. And so I'll just keep going. Welcome to the Jen Hebert Show tonight. I hope you've all enjoyed coming. The marching band had a pancake breakfast. They're raising money for their trip this summer. They got invited to be in the Fourth of July Parade in DC, which is a huge honor and just something that we're all really looking forward to, but obviously everything takes a little bit of money. So, the pancake breakfast was a great fundraiser to raise money for that. And there's actually, keep your eyes open for a fundraiser that's coming up. Our marching band will be raising money to finally get some new uniforms, and we're really excited about it as a band parent and a person who has a student in band. And so when you see those fundraisers, if you could, come out and support them because the uniforms are expensive and the kids are deserving.
That is on March 19th.
Thank you, Tom.
At Finley's of Green Street.
Yeah, Finley's, Green Street, March 19th. Be there. It'll be fun.
And there are two other events this week. There's K-Factor on Friday at the high school, and also on Thursday is the Tri-C Y A Black Ashi Month celebration.
Oh, that's true, and it's the Art Honor Society induction meeting, I believe, as well.
They're in different rooms.
Yep. Covered everything you had, Mr. Polanski. It's just none of you.
I'm just trying to keep up here.
Did anybody else have anything to say? All right, then we're right to you.
All right, I will be brief because, yes, thank you for covering most. I do want to mention a few things that are not event-oriented. Number one, we did get a report back from our internal auditor regarding risk assessment. Dr. Ackert shared that with me. It will go to the audit committee next, but the board has a copy of that, and I thought it was a very positive, a set of positive outcomes in terms of the things that we have done to minimize our risk and to certainly contribute to our fiscal rating across the board. So, thank you for that. Reimagining readiness graduation measures. The push continues to develop a new set of graduation requirements in New York State. There are a slew of meetings this month around the state that are designed for educators and parents and others who wish to have any input into the process whatsoever. It is definitely going to be a different approach than what basically exists now as a set of five exams as primary, really the only major non-school-oriented graduation requirements. That will likely change in the years to come. There are two meetings on Long Island. One is on March 4th. Eastern Suffolk Bosse's, the Sequoia Center. That is an evening meeting. The other is a morning meeting on March 27th at the Western Suffolk Bosse's Lee Avenue Conference Center. So, we've been speaking to the administrators in district about this. We will have a presence at one or both of those meetings.
Is that just for administrators?
No, it's for anybody, if there is an R S V P involved. I have the reminder in your update this week, so if you're interested, I'm going to try and go to the Friday morning event on the 27th, Western Suffolk, if you'd like to attend with me.
Yeah, I think I want to go to that as well.
Let me know. Oh, R S V P for all of us together. A lot of work being done around the district in terms of, and I know that Bill is not, should mention, Bill Dwyer's not here tonight. He has a work event, and Linda is not here. She is dealing with some personal matters tonight. So, we hope to have them back very shortly. One of the things that Bill had mentioned, had highlighted, back when we first developed board goals, was a mid-year assessment of progress, and that is, obviously, right in the middle of budget season. Working on that, some great, some great things to share about some of the initiatives that are underway based on the board goals for 2019-20. So I'm excited to share that with you. But some numbers are coming out that really are showing that we are doing good things for all kids here, and my hope is that you'll be as excited as we are to see where we are. Part of that is, and I know Beth McCoy and Judy Moroff and a number of administrators throughout the district were pushing heavily for this QTEL process, and the drawback, in my eyes, was it really started with a West Coast training over the summer, but it, high enough quality where some of the work that they did over the summer that they brought back and has been initiated in district is really starting to focus on all kids, education of all kids, our English language learners from top to bottom, just to make sure that there is not a child in this district falling through the cracks. So the efforts are there, and there's always more work to be done, but the work is, the work is being done in more ways than, than, probably in a lot of other places, but I'll leave it at that. Arts and Ed, the fundraiser was terrific, but I also would like to highlight some of the great things that are coming in as a result of that fundraiser. Just today at Finley, there was a program for seventh graders. Vice President from Marvel Entertainment was with the kids for the entire day, basically showing these, these, these young students that there are careers available for those who are interested in doodling. In law, in engineering. Marvel is a multifaceted institution that has all kinds of things going on, all kinds of interests that can be taken to all different sorts of levels. So it's just nice to have the kids exposed to some of the potentials for careers they'll have upon graduating high school and college, et cetera. But that's a great event, and I know the, I believe it's the fifth grade will experience a hip-hop, hip-hop, very exciting hip-hop presentation that's also designed to bring people together in terms of cultural proficiency, et cetera. That's coming into both Jack...
Globalization of hip-hop or something like that.
Globalization of hip-hop. Really cool music is how it was presented to me. Fifth grade at both Jack Abrams and at, at...
Hip-hop.
Hip-hop, hip-hop and more. Okay, you mentioned K-Factor on Friday night. There is also a Flower Hill Talent Show that's taking place at Finley on Friday night, and I know they're very excited about that. With a string fiesta coming up. It's our annual string fiesta on Saturday, to be followed a couple of weeks down the road by our band fest. This is a great way to get our young kids and our high school musicians together, working together to create beautiful music and to have a great time on a weekend day. There is a wellness fair coming up at the high school on March 28th. It has been deemed the first, or I should say dubbed the first annual. Mr. Cusack and company have a great day planned for students and families, grades four through 12 primarily, so keep that on the calendar. And I'd also like to throw out some congratulatory remarks here. First of all, we have three national merit finalists, one I'm staring at as we speak, Ryan and Andrew Knowles and Matt Gennarelli. Congratulations to those three young men. Those that don't know about the National Merit Scholarship Program, it is among the highest honors that a high school student can receive upon graduating high school. So to be a finalist in this competition is, is nothing to be short-changed. And I'd also like to congratulate our 2020 valedictorian and salutatorian. That would be Mr. Andrew Knowles and Julian Wrench, respectively. Congratulations to those two. And we'll leave it at that.
I forgot to mention Hefy. I don't want to get in trouble.
No, do you actually?
I'll get in trouble, too.
The Hefy fundraiser, the gala, is next week. There is still a small amount of time to get your tickets. Please reach out to them. I think you can do it online. If you look on, anywhere on Facebook or on the digital web page, I think you'll find a link.
Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you for remembering that. I appreciate it. All right, that brings us to the first public commentary section. So, for those of you who are new to the meeting, how we handle this is that usually our first public commentary section is for items that would have to do with the items in our discussion and action section, which would be our virtual enterprise program and our budget presentation. If there's enough time in the 30-minute section that, you know, we still have time, you can come and address other things, but I will just caution you that you shouldn't use any personal names of staff or students. And you have three minutes, and you should state your name and your affiliation to the district if you would like to come up and speak. Anyone? I love when I give that whole spiel, and then you all just look at me and nobody comes up. So we're going to move on. We're moving on to our very first item, and that is our Huntington High School Virtual Enterprise Program, and we love when you all come and do presentations like this. I'm going to get out of the way, but welcome, and...
So just very briefly, the board is now full-thrust into the budget process for 2021, and it really is a nice thing for us to be able to showcase some of the things that are being done with the funds that have provided this year and in past years. And one of our newest accomplishments as a district, and certainly on behalf of these young people here with us this evening, the virtual enterprise program at Huntington High School has, has taken off and has flown in an exponential manner from, from year one. It is, just hearing from some of the kids, it's, it's a reason to come to school, or of course, many reasons to come to school, but this is something, they don't want to miss this because it's, it's that, it's that not only important to them, but it's that real-life situation for them. So, I'm going to stop talking at this point, and I'm going to give it to Mr. Cusack to start us off.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Thanks so much for having us, and thanks for giving us the opportunity to have the kids showcase their work tonight. And I want to thank all of our representatives who came to, to put in their hard work and show what they've been working on. Thank you, guys, for coming, and I want to thank also our two teachers who have really spearheaded the virtual enterprise program, Mrs. Biagi and Ms. Furman, who, Mrs. Furman, who have really, years ago, they brought this idea to me as kind of just a seed, saying, this is something we really need to look into, and they did tons of legwork over the years to bring this program to fruition. And I am so grateful for the work that you guys have done to bring this to kids because I could, I have a little script here, because otherwise I could talk all night about virtual enterprise, and I know you have a lengthy slideshow after this. I just want to...
You can say for that, right?
What's that?
You can say for that.
Yes, of course. So, I'll stick to the script then and keep myself out of trouble. Good evening. Tonight, I'm very proud to present to you representatives of our three virtual enterprise firms, whose names are Biosoul, Snooze, and Titan, the firms' names, not the students' names. That would be strange. Tonight, they will provide you with a brief overview of the work they've been doing in their firms, and I am sure you will be impressed with the scope and the quality of their work. The virtual enterprise program has been an outstanding success at Huntington High School since its inception last school year. The program has grown to three sections this year due to the popularity of the class. Having said that, it bears mentioning that this is not an easy class. The level and the depth of the work that's required for virtual enterprise is indeed very challenging. It encompasses all aspects of a real business, including networking, marketing research, human resources work, branding, prototyping, accounting, problem-solving, and more. And our firms do compete with, for other firms, high school firms from around the world, and they do very well in these competitions. This is truly a hands-on and realistic business simulation, and it is always inspiring to see what our students can achieve within this context. In many educational discussions, Mr. Polanski mentioned one, the reimagining readiness forums, virtual enterprise is held up as a model of what school curricula could and should look like in the future. So, rather than me talk a lot about virtual enterprise, I think it is a very inspiring program. It is something that is refreshing to see the kids involved in, the challenges and all that I know you, you work with and through. But at this time, I'm very happy to present our students, and they will show you a little bit about each of their firms and the work that they're, that they've been doing throughout the course of this year. We'll start off with Biosoul, and Biosoul will be represented by senior Matt Gennarelli.
Thank you, Mr. Cusack. My name is Matthew Gennarelli. I'm the COO of Biosoul and a senior at Huntington High School. Biosoul got started in September of this year, at the beginning of the school year, and since then, we have absolutely just hit the ground running, and, thank you. And the thing that has impressed me the most, really, is just, I mean, we've hit the ground running, we just haven't stopped. Now, as many of the parents, teachers, you know, even students here can attest to, finding ways to motivate high school students can be challenging at times, but, I mean, I walk into class every day and people are just getting right to work. We have kids creating balance sheets, making sales calls, planning events, and they just feel this sense of accountability and responsibility, yes, to themselves, to the organization, but more importantly, to each other. And I really don't think that's something that you can get anywhere else in high school with that, where you have that experience running an organization professionally that drives the kids to be accountable to each other and put in that kind of effort. And obviously, we do have tremendous support from Ms. Tyree, of course, and Ms. Biagi for the other class, and as well as from the district, Mr. Cusack, Mr. Polanski have helped us out a lot. But, um, it really is just students coming in every day and running this organization professionally. So as I mentioned, we did start in September, and within two weeks, we had our company product and our company name, which is Biosoul. I won't get too much into the nitty-gritty about the product and give you the whole pitch or whatever, because I can talk about that for days, but our product is a biodegradable sunscreen wipe. So again, I mean, if any parents here have to deal with the struggle of getting their kids ready to go to the beach or something, you know, just a quick, easy, environmentally-friendly method of sunscreen application was the product that we decided to go with. A few weeks later, we had an elevator pitch competition where our CEO, Charles O'Rourke, gave a one-minute pitch to judges and an audience, and just preparing for that, I think, kind of grounded the foundation of our company. I mean, we had less than a month to not only put a product together, but put our beliefs together and put that into a convincing pitch, and he did very well, and it finished in the top 10% with that. And that really just started the ball rolling on a very successful year thus far for our company. After that, we went into planning a networking night, which we held in mid-December at the Hailsite Fire Department, and that night was also a tremendous success and entirely because of the hard work of the students. We had students going, making connections, making phone calls to connections, to rent us a place, to get donations. I mean, for our food donations, we literally went door-to-door to every store in the town asking for food, and if they'd be willing to give us donations, and we got a tremendous amount of support from the community, which, again, we were so thankful for. And so that night was a tremendous success, and we did meet and exceed our goals. Recently, at the beginning of January, we had our trade show, which is kind of the, you know, meat and potatoes of the competition, where we had our business plan pitch, and we also created a booth where we went around and made sales. We did very well in every aspect of this. Our booth actually won an award for, as the second-best booth of the 103 booths that were there. Our sales team sold over $400,000 worth of units, which doesn't really mean that much because it's fake money, but it was a lot of hard work, and it's very impressive, so I just want to give them a shout-out for that. And then, we also gave the pitch, which was a 10-minute, you know, Shark Tank-like pitch about what our company is, what we believe in, and all of the aspects of our company that make it a, you know, financially and, a financially-successful company. And we finished in the top 10 of that as well, and we will have our pitch, we have another pitch coming up on March 10th for the opportunity to move to the national competitions. Only 10 of the 103 firms there were named to move on, and five of those 10 will move to nationals. We have pretty good odds for that. And then, now, just the last thing I want to talk about quickly, I know I'm running a little long here, but, just because I think it's pretty cool. Our CEO also recently organized a field trip for our class, again, entirely on himself. He text, he emailed a guy that he had a connection with to see if he could set up a visit to NASDAQ to take a look around there, to get a better, you know, view into the real business world and the financial world. And we will be heading to NASDAQ on a class field trip on March 5th. I just think that's pretty cool. I wanted to throw that in. I mean, it's just a great opportunity, as Mr. Cusack said before, just to kind of wrap this up. As, as you said before, just to give these students that they all have like-minded interests in business and finance, to give them all that real-world experience as, as to what it is to be in that arena. Being, running this business is just one of those things. Visiting the NASDAQ, obviously, making all these connections with all these different people. I didn't go through my slides at all, but that's our team. Very professional, obviously. It's just, it just gives them that experience of making those connections, you know, giving a pitch, putting that all together, throwing an event together, and obviously gives them a great idea of if that is something that they do want to pursue going into the future. So, I'm going to hand it off to Snooze. Before I do, I'm just going to put up our contact information, some social media plugs, so if you have Instagram, Facebook, you can follow us on those, TikTok, you know, I don't know if this is the right crowd for that, but we have our email at the bottom, a website that was built by a student also that you can check out. And without further ado, I will give it over to Snooze.
Thanks so much, Matt. Yes, so at this time, we're going to, we're going to switch over to our second firm, and just so you know, I chose the order of these completely randomly. They are very competitive with each other. We're trying to work on that, right? A little bit? And so, I, there's no favoritism. I just picked them out of a hat, literally. At any rate, next up is Snooze, and Snooze will be represented by juniors Joey Nikotra, Nick Tedesco, and Stephen Queen.
What's the clicker?
So, hello, my name is Nick Tedesco. I'm the COO of Snooze.
I'm Stephen Queen, the Vice President of Sales of Snooze.
And I'm Joey Nikotra, the Sales Manager.
So, basically, Snooze is a virtual company that we came up with back in September. It's a, we came up with a pillow product line that uses a, thank you, that, we use aromatherapy technology in our insertable pods, and you insert them into the pillow, and that diffuses the scent that helps you fall asleep. So that's basically the idea around our company, so just get into the slide. So, our mission statement is, here at Snooze, we pride ourselves on bringing you the most affordable, customizable, and natural techniques to improve your sleep quality. Through the use of clean and natural ingredients, we are working to create a line of pillows with customizable features so that consumers can personalize their pillow to cater to their personal needs.
This is our website. It lists all our products, what we're about here at Snooze. Our CTO, Justin Malcos, is insane with technology. He did a great job on this website. We have some facts about sleep, how many years and seconds, minutes, and days and hours the average person spends sleeping, our products, pods, and pillows.
All right, so, yeah, this is our team. So, you know, we got a great group of kids. We, in the beginning of the course, we separated into five departments, and then we elected five executives over those departments. So there's marketing, sales, resources, design, and technology.
So, yeah, there's one of our employees, Aiden Vender. This is just the pricing of all of our different products. So you see, we took a lot of time to come up with different products. We have the pillows themselves, and then the different pods that come with them, so we have different scents for different effects. And then we also have, you know, some novelty pods, like music pods, alarm pods, we have heating and cooling. So we came up with all this by ourselves. We developed the pricing, and this is the pricing that we use when we're selling to actual people at trade shows and things like that.
October, we also had our elevator pitch, like all the other V E companies. So, our CEO, Taylor Case, came up with an elevator pitch in under a minute, and we presented it to a couple judges. We did all right. I think we did pretty, pretty good. Here's our, our executives, and, yeah, this is it. How are you?
All right, so in October, we also submitted our branding competition, which is basically just submitting our, you know, our website, all our social medias. You know, we designed all this from scratch, our website, Justin did it all, and then the design team. And, yeah, we got Instagram, Twitter, and that's how we do a lot of our sales, actually, contacting other firms through the Instagram.
So, we got the pleasure of doing two different fundraiser nights. One of them was at school, we had a bake sale. We sold a little bit of pizza after school to raise money, to buy shirts, so we got our company uniform. And then we also had a fundraiser night at Chipotle where we got a portion of the proceeds there, so that was a lot of fun, too. Great success.
We had our first really big trade show at East Winds Bakery. I think it was a bakery, yeah. That's what it was. Yeah. In December? Oh, caterers. We had to make a booth and design it and everything, and come up with activities for people to interact with. We had pens, we had our brochures, we had a raffle even. It was our whole firm that came, and, yeah.
So, yeah, me and Stephen were lucky enough to go to the business plan presentation, so that was a lot of fun. We got to tell some judges about our company, you know, the things that we've done so far, our goals as a company, and, yeah, that was a lot of fun.
All right, yeah, so in January, we went to a little bit of a bigger trade show than East Winds at LIU, and here we, we were able to increase our sales, and, you know, these trade shows are great for, you know, interacting with all the other firms, all the other kids. They're just kids like us, you know, there's not really any, it's not like run by an adult, so really the only incentive you have is just to, like, make sales for, for your firm, so you gotta, you gotta go and talk to people.
So another fun thing we did was in class, so during our class time, we, we did some employee workshops. So we, we all broke up into groups and focused on individual things that, you know, make a good, you know, business member, so what makes a good team player, communication skills, you know, maybe preparing for making sales. These are all some of the things we did in our employee workshops.
In the future, we have a lot of things to accomplish. We have a really big trade show coming up in Brooklyn in April. We have our video and commercial competition. It's a work in progress. We're almost done with it. It's going to be awesome. Our national human resource competition, we have a radio spot competition, and our advanced website competition coming up. There you go.
Yeah, so this is our brochure, and, you know, this is completely made from scratch by, all the departments worked on this design, marketing, sales, and, yeah, it's just really cool. It shows you how much work really has to go into stuff like this, like, you think it's just like a simple brochure, but it takes a long time. It's, uh, it's designed and everything. A brochure took a long time. Very long.
Yeah, so we'll take the end just to talk a little bit about the class, you know, what we like about, oh, you can finish talking about the brochure.
That's it. That's just the back.
That's just the back of the brochure. So, one thing that I love about this class is that it really is just completely independent. You know, you're used to, in high school, getting in classes, you sit down, a teacher talks to you, and, you know, you listen, you take notes, but in this class, you really just, you got to figure... in this class, you really just, you gotta figure it out on your own. It's just like the real world. That's what I love about it. So we all learned, you know, how to be independent, work together, you know, we're always texting each other, making phone calls, figuring stuff out, you know, just like Matt said, we, it's all run by the students and it's really a fun time. And we really became a family because of it. And we're all really, really tight and it's rea- it's really fun. I love this class.
Yeah, I just wanna say like the dynamic is just so different in this class than all the other ones, because it's not really focused so heavily on like the grades and getting your work in. What, how you're like measured is just how successful your firm is. So you really just have a responsibility, like you said, to, uh, you know, to your classmates, your friends, and like coworkers, I guess. But, uh, yeah, the kids, you work hard because you want to be successful. It's not really for the grades. That's what's so different about it.
Thank you very much, guys. That was great. Did you say you had a fundraiser at a bakery? Very nice chat. As you can see, they're having fun, um, and that's, that's important. Um, but truly, there's a lot of very creative work going on here. And as you can see from, from a number of the, uh, the avenues that they're talking about here, this kind of work can, um, encompass students who have all different kinds of interests, whether it be in, in fine arts or marketing or sales, networking, uh, literature even, and, and writing and communicating. All of these things come into play. And I think that is what um, is really special about this program because it's, we talk about interdisciplinary learning all the time. This is really interdisciplinary learning. Um, and it's very cool to see what you guys are putting together. Um, so our last firm for this evening, we will have Titan. And Titan is represented by Senior Abby Holmes and Juniors David Marriquin and Nate Deegan.
Good evening. My name is Abigail Holmes. I'm the CEO of Titan Virtual Enterprise Period Four. On behalf of the entire Titan team, thank you so much for the opportunity to share what our firm has been working on for the past five months. We're really excited to be here tonight. So registered as a B Corporation on October nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, Titan is producing a backpack that maximizes consumers' utility through its many features while uniquely maintaining environmental integrity. Our bags are made of sixty-eight percent repurposed material, including recycled plastic bottles donated by our partner Costco Wholesale of Melville, who our team members have created a contracted manufacturing agreement with. If our firm were to move into the manufacturing phase, plastic bottles we collect will be sent to Reprieve, a leading global textile solutions company in North Carolina, to repurpose the plastic into synthetic polyfiber yarn, which would then be used as material for making our bags. However, at Titan, we're really more, about more than just our product. Throughout the year, our employees learn various interdisciplinary skills ranging from accounting, design, public speaking, sales, and much more that they will then carry with them to whatever future endeavors they decide to pursue. At this point, I'd like to introduce Nathaniel Deegan, our Vice President of Marketing, to discuss Titan's work outside of the classroom.
Titan participates in virtual trading by contacting fellow VE firms on social media and interacting with them at trade shows. The majority of our sales come from multiple trade shows throughout the year, which we have funded from bake sales, uh, gift wrapping at the mall, and a networking night open to the whole community on March tenth. Our latest sales highlight has been making trades with international firms from Chile, Spain, South Korea, France, and Belgium. We have also enjoyed sharing experience with Chinese high school foreign exchange students via Skype. I'd now like to introduce our Design and IT Manager, David Marriquin, to discuss his experiences in Titan.
Well, being part of the Virtual Enterprise Program as a manager of the Design Department for Titan has been the highlight of my junior year. Virtual Enterprise has allowed me and many other students to explore new opportunities that are both fun but also challenging. Designing opportunities, though, designing promotional materials for Titan such as the newsletter and fundraiser that Nathaniel will be giving momentarily has, um, strengthened my skill set, which will help me as I pursue my future career. The challenges that you face and the efforts that you put into Virtual Enterprise is, in my opinion, what makes it fun and exciting.
Huntington's Virtual Enterprise Program is unique in that it provides an atmosphere for students to explore their passions and find new fields of interest in a collaborative environment. While our team understands that in just a few months Titan will no longer exist, we hope that future Huntington students will continue to take advantage of the amazing opportunities that Virtual Enterprise has to offer. That being said, our employees have noticed a few areas of growth in our existing program, which could benefit from additional funding, which is why on March tenth, we will be hosting a fundraiser at the Elks Lodge to create a seed fund for future Huntington Virtual Enterprise firms, as well as to fundraise for new design technology for the Huntington Virtual Enterprise Room. Thank you so much for taking time tonight out of your very busy schedules to hear a bit about Titan's efforts this year. I hope to see each and every one of you and everyone in the audience, um, at the Elks Lodge on March tenth at six PM. And again, just on behalf of all of our Titan employees, we appreciate the continued support of the Board of Education and the entire Huntington community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Um, again, thanks to all of our students who presented tonight and put this together. Thank you. Um, and again, a, a big, a big thank you to Ms. Biagia and to Ms. Furman for all of the work that you've done in, in bringing this idea forward, in doing a lot of the legwork and spearheading this, because I think it truly is, you know, a, a keystone of what we have at the high school. Um, so as you can see, our, our kids have been doing great work. Uh, I'd like to also share my gratitude with Mr. Polanski, Mrs. McCoy, Dr. Acker, and the Board of Education for your continued support of Virtual Enterprise and for allowing the kids to showcase their work tonight. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
I don't know if you needed any, if you had any questions about the program, anything I could answer for, for anybody?
I don't have any questions. I just wanna say how impressed I am.
They killed it, so I don't really have anything else to say.
Yeah, they really did. I, it's so impressive and, and truthfully, somebody who's been on the board for a while, we've always been trying to look towards the future of education as a way to get kids both college and career ready. And that career ready piece has been slower to come. And so to see something like this happening in our schools is just inspiring and fantastic. Excuse me. Thank you for taking advantage of it. And thank you both for your hard work. I know how much you do and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Alright, well, that brings us to our budget presentation. I don't know if our students need time to skedaddle because they wanna maybe get out of here before the eighty-eight slides? Quick run. I'm going too. Somebody give me cover.
You need a, uh, you got it? Just make it take longer.
I like to watch it here in case I have a question. And I don't like those chairs.
So if you're not interested in, in purchasing one of the Snooze products, this presentation should really do the trick.
It worked when I looked it over.
And this is free. I don't know why that's so funny either. It's just.
You don't? You really don't?
No.
Very sad.
We ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. I am really going to try and do this as quickly as possible. No, he said something. I didn't hear it. Alright, so this, this presentation follows construction of Budget Draft One. It is an arduous process that really starts back in October that leads us to this point. And there are some decisions that are gonna have to be made. So we are in a position right now where we're going to present something tonight that's going to change over time until such time that the Board adopts in April. Alright, so we are looking at an overview of, of the first draft and some mechanics behind some of the cost centers. Uh, just to bring back some of the things we discussed the last meeting, our tax levy limit for twenty twenty-one falls in at two point one nine percent. It's a little bit less than the levy limit for the current year, primarily because the cost of, of living, the CPI that is used to determine the, the base for this calculation was a little bit higher for this year than it will be for next year. And there is a dollar amount of the tax levy limit. And the primary factors contributing, as I mentioned, it were at one point eight one percent, which is less than two. Tax based growth factor fits, uh, fits, fits the bill as, as part of the uh, determination of the final tax levy limit that reflects some growth in the community. And anything above that, one twelve, eight sixteen, two forty-nine requires a sixty percent super majority voter approval. These are numbers you saw last week. Some history behind the tax levy limit as it compares to the CPI growth. And notice each year that the CPI growth is above two, the allowable levy growth factor is at two. When it's below two, they match. And there it is graphically. And this is the tax levy limit calculation as presented during the last meeting. There's something new to this calculation and that is the capital tax levy. There is a small amount for the current year and there's a small amount for the coming year. Those are both add-ons based on the fact that law now allows us to utilize BOSI's capital as part of the exclusion process. We've had a zero capital tax levy exclusion for years, primarily because we fund our capital work through reserves. While that, so that spending would not qualify in any other small bits and pieces of capital work that we do. It is outweighed and out, outnumbered by building aids. So we can't go into a negative there, so it, it stays at zero. Basically, those two numbers wash. It would not change the two point one nine percent if we remove them completely. So this is what the initial budget draft looks like. So nineteen twenty is in the second column. Those are numbers that you're familiar with. Board is familiar with those numbers. Our initial draft is showing a budget of one thirty-eight, two eighty-six, five sixty-one, as compared to what the budget would look like at the levy limit, the two point one, uh, two point one nine percent. And you can look right down those columns there and see the difference between the tax levy in that middle column, the initial draft, and the final column at the levy limit. That is the difference that will have to be overcome over the next couple of weeks. I will also point out that we are estimating at this point flat assessed valuation. That is a board prerogative. We can change that. It is a projection at this point. We are proje- we are projecting that will remain flat primarily based on that one point double zero three six growth factor that you saw on a previous slide. Conservatively speaking, we can lower that. It will not affect the budget. It will not affect the tax levy. But if you lower the assessed valuation, it will impact the tax rate in a negative direction. Or if you decide that, well, the assessed value should go up. If you decide that we need to raise that number, it will lower the tax rate. You know how that would count? Projected tax rate, exactly. Projected until the levy is adopted in the fall, actually. Thank you. Okay, so there is the budget to budget change in our draft and at the levy limit. Budget to budget increase in our draft and at the levy limit. I do want to make it clear that we do not expect at this point the Board to adopt a budget with a levy that is above the limit. So at the very least, we are looking to get to that set of numbers in the last column. But it is certainly worthy of note that here is where we are today, right in the middle. And here's the gap that would need to be overcome to get to that levy limit, dollar figure and percentage. So it's almost two point one million dollars that we're looking for at this point. And there are some ideas that we have. Some changes will be made between this and the next presentation. Uh, but we do anticipate it'll be a challenge to get to that, that final number. Some decisions are gonna have to be made. What the tax rates, what the tax rate looks like currently, what it looks like under the initial set of numbers and at the levy limit. And again, if that assessed valuation remains unchanged in projected form, the estimated tax rate change will match the levy limit increase. If the budget is adopted at that limit and if the, again, the assessed valuation is projected to stay flat. So let's get into some of the numbers underlying all of this. So we have a number of non-discretionary cost categories. These are our cost drivers. Without any hesitation, I can say that the majority of the cost increases are reflected in these categories, some of them much more significantly than others. Salary and contractual obligations. Doesn't matter what school district you're a part of, these are the primary cost drivers. So at this point, this is what we're looking at. And here is part of our challenge. We are in the process of negotiating with a number of units. Um, we are trying to work through some of the processes here, some of which have come to an end, some of which are coming to an end, and others that are just beginning. But notice the increase there does exceed, I'll say considerably, the tax levy limit percent that you saw on one of the previous, multiple slides previously. Okay, and I'll also mention that some of the settlements that are being negotiated right now will have retroactive monies paid into either the current year or even the prior year. Now the cost driver, pension contributions. Some changes for the current year. We are looking at a twenty twenty-one employer contribution rate, nine point five three percent, compared to the eight point eight six percent that's being paid on certificated salaries for the current year. It is not determined by us. It's determined by a number of factors. There's a rolling average that, that kicks in as part of it. Uh, we lost, uh, the TRS, the investments that are part of the TRS process. We lost a hi- high return year. It's replaced by a slightly lower return year, and that's contributing to the increase from this year to next year. So even if the people in this district, the certificated teachers and administrators and all the employees that are part of the TRS stayed exactly the same, we'd be paying more in retirement system costs for next year because the percentage of certificated salaries has gone up. And for ERS, all of our civil service employees and non-certificated folks, uh, we're looking at a rate at approximately where it is for the current year. Okay, now that does, that point nine eight percent helps, uh, helps to a certain degree offset some of the larger increases in other areas. Uh, primarily reflective of some changes in staff. We do have some new staff that are a little bit less expensive than the more experienced staff. We have to pay less for them in a total dollar figure amount, a total dollar amount. But there are a number of factors that go in here. It looks like it's, it's going to be relatively stable between this year and next year. And obviously, we have not discussed this yet, but there is the option for the first time of using some of the monies in that TRS reserve, sub-reserve fund to cover some of the TRS costs. General insurance. This does not include the employee benefit insurances, health, dental, and life insurance. And these are just reflective of general premium increases. And I think the primary driver there, and Dr. Acker can correct me if I'm wrong, student accident insurance. We've had an increase in claims. Um, and there are people without insurance where it costs us more when that, when that's the case. And this is not, uh, it's just a fact of, of, of life in terms of how the insurance process works. Debt service. The bond on the books is a two thousand and six issue. The balance on that bond is just over a million dollars. And we will be paying two hundred and twenty-eight, eight hundred in principal and interest for the coming year. We have very little debt in this school district. It is something that we've been talking about for a number of years and that does benefit us in the It is something that we've been talking about for a number of years, and it does benefit us in a number of ways in terms of borrowing and tax anticipation notes, et cetera. We've taken pride in this, uh, something to look at moving forward. But for now, understand that we are among the very few districts probably in the state with this low, a level of debt. Yep. And as we, over the next few years, pay that off, the principal and interest is going to, to go down marginally. Kind of stays in the same range, part of an amortization schedule. But notice there's a slight decrease primarily due to the payoff that's taken place. Remember, we refinanced this years ago, saved us some interest costs, and now we're, we're finishing it off over the next few years. We pay a portion of BOSI's admin costs and operational costs. As mentioned, this is now part of the, the capital BOSI's process is now incorporated into our tax levy limit calculation. These are BOSI's determined rates. Any increases is really imposed upon us. There are years where they can control the costs a little bit more than other years. And we are looking at about an 84, a little, 8370 of an increase there. Can't work without oil, electric, gas, water, telephone, sewer, et cetera. These utilities are staples. The big increase, the driver here is natural gas, which is projected to go up about 3.27%. Some of the others are coming down, so that's a net change that you see there. Uh, we may be able to look at electric a little bit more closely in a future draft based on an analysis that we have not yet completed. I am sure we did. I don't know, Kathy, you have a, a general.
A good cost savings in the LED which kind of helped, um, the impact of the air conditioning at the high school?
Yeah.
Right, so that helped.
That's right, because of course, they're running.
Yeah, right, so we kind of, but we're still incurring the savings, but that also helped.
That's great.
You know?
Yeah.
Pay for that.
But wouldn't, we've also realized some savings from the new boilers and things that have been installed in the, in the buildings, like this building as well as Wood Hall, right?
We had, we don't have the analysis on that yet, but we should.
Okay, also mandated and obviously needed, special education costs. The big expenditures here are for out-of-district placements. Obviously contracted services for both in and out-of-district students. Also included in this cost are services provided to non-resident students that are maybe attending, while they're attending St. Pat's. Uh, we are reimbursed by the districts who are the, the districts of residence for those students. It is not immediate, but it does, it does come in during that, that same budget year. Part of the increase, a, a big chunk of the increase here, and I know this was pointed out as being significant. One out-of-district placement can come with a significant cost. We, uh, the special education department here does a tremendous job trying to find the right placements for kids. But if a child moves in severely disabled and is in need of services that we cannot provide, it may require an outside placement. And although it may seem cost-effective to us in comparison to other placements, uh, that doesn't mean it's cheap. And a couple of placements here can make a considerable difference. We can absorb it. My question is always in a district that's very small, that has a very small tax base and, and budget, a budget to begin with. One placement can put them in a very difficult position, but we've got to service these kids as, as best as we possibly can and get them the best education possible. So this is a, a cost that we must incur. So in brief, if you take all of those increases, and that includes that $2,000 decrease in debt service. And this doesn't even include Tom's favorite health insurance. Notice that that is 82.5% plus of the increase from 1920 to 2021. So you're not seeing the percent increases line by line there, but that, that volume of money, primarily in salary and contractual obligations, as you can see, is contributing to the majority of the increase from this year to next year. And that leaves the other 17.49% in discretionary spending. And this is everything else. Staffing, techs, workbooks, technology, supplies, equipment, et cetera, et cetera. These are all of the things that we really would like to spend as much money on as possible. And just to break down, you've seen these slides before, budget by function. Notice that including salaries, we do allocate over half, well over half of the budget to the instructional process. And obviously, if you want to look at it by, by object, salaries and benefits are a major component. And it's not a Huntington phenomenon. This is something you're gonna find in any district, but we, of course, are only worried about what we need to deal with here. So you're dealing with, uh, almost 75% of the budget from those two items alone, salaries and, and major benefits, including health. And then if you look at the instructional budget by object, most of that is in salaries and benefits as well. So again, it gives you a sense of what the cost drivers look like, and that's where we're going here. So what brings us from one year to the next? And why are the increases there each year? Salary stipends, health insurance, special education placements, transportation costs, technology costs in the form of device replacement. I have gotten wind of the fact that our most recent submission, smart school submission is going to come through very shortly, so we should receive some offsetting technology revenue there. But we looked at these very specifically. These are the drivers for 2021, and a lot of them you see year after year. And unfortunately for 2021, there's not much driving savings. You saw $2,000 savings and debt reduction. I didn't want to leave this slide blank. $2,000 savings and debt service reduction. And we are working on transferring some of our costs to places like BOSI's. This is why that aid consolidation, moving those expense-based aid categories into foundation aid are problematic. I think that's going to, if that actually sticks, it's going to hurt BOSI's in the short and long run. We're trying to look for ways to save, meaning if we purchase something off list, purchase something through BOSI's, it may cost a little bit more with Bo-, uh, through BOSI's, but we'll get X percent of aid back on it. I wish I had more to add to this list. Alright, so again, you see where, where the problems lie for school districts. Budgets are ever-increasing. The assessed valuation is relatively flat. And state aid, oh, we've gotten a little bit more in recent years primarily due to the eradication of the gap elimination adjustment. We're just not getting what we really need to, to help us significantly. And, and Huntington in particular, we are only funded by about, our tax levy is, well, our, our state aid is about 14% of our revenue. So most of the rest of that is our tax levy. So it's not really helping us a great deal, but every penny counts, and it's certainly not insignificant. District enrollment trend. Past couple of years, it's been a little bit up and down, but primarily flat. We've been hovering around that, that 4,500 number for some time now. And now we're gonna get into the cost centers. This is just to make sure that everybody's awake. Sure you clap for that. But they're a lot cuter, aren't they? Okay. That was Valentine's Day. Okay. Everybody up? Okay, moving on. Alright, budget cost centers. Let's look at 1,000. This is where we typically begin. These are all the central, uh, general administration, central administration costs. I'll go through them quickly. This is what the increase looks like overall. It is not particularly significant in the overall scheme of things. It's about a $301,000 increase for all of the 1,000 codes. I'll go through them quickly. Board of Education. Can read the list. Basically, we put money there every year for board conferences. There's money left over each year, so we're trying to go based on, on actuals. And we estimate actual because you never know what's gonna happen between here and, uh, here and year end. But this is a safe bet for 2021. District clerk. Mrs. Miranda saving us $52. Stop me with questions. Board meeting needs, budget vote, poll workers, et cetera. Small increase here reflects a slight, slight increase in electric, how electric, electric election worker pay, poll worker pay. And that's something that the board approves on an annual basis. So my office, which includes myself and Mrs. Miranda, conferences, workshops, everything that goes along with, uh, the processes and things that go through my office. Lot of mailing. Okay. Business office, which goes well beyond Kathy's office. We're talking purchasing, payroll. There is a number of staff salaries involved, and obvi-, obviously all of the fiscal work that needs to be done. Contracted services are budgeted there, et cetera. Accounts payable, purchasing payroll, benefits. There are some unit-based salary increases budgeted. We also moved E-rate into the business office from another code, and there are some contracted service increases in there as well, which is that 25,000 plus that you see. Auditing. We have three different audit processes. We have the external independent audit, which is an annual process. We have a new internal audit firm that looks at things that we choose and things that they recommend. And claims audits are taking place every month, as you know. That look for things like confirming purchase orders, et cetera. And these are just anticipated contractual increases for each one of those three entities. Treasure. We did save a little money here for the current year primarily because we went from a full-time to a part-time. So the 1819 actual to 1920 estimated actual and budget reflects that full-time to part-time shift. It's a little piece of that salary and supplies involved in that small increase. Purchasing, this is basically one line. It's an Eastern Suffolk BOSI's cooperative purchasing program that we purchase in, that we buy into. It's one line in the budget, but it does help with those five things and more. Yes, exactly. Take two forms of legal services, general counsel and labor counsel. We use the same firm for both. It's Garcia and Garcia. It's something we, I mean, obviously have.
Bit of a cushion there?
What's that?
Seems like a bit of a cushion.
Yes, so we actually reduced, um, our estimated actual for 1920. There's a little bit of a cushion there. Uh, it's really just in anticipation of any problem, which really has not occurred, but it is, uh, probably safe to have it there. And that estimated actual may be a high end as well at this point. Human resources. OLAAS, our online application system service, ASOP, our subservice, our EAP program. And other recruiting and hiring processes that we enter into with either Eastern Suffolk BOSI's or other entities. It's all in here. Okay, and here you see the effects of a couple of things. There was a salary shifted into human resources between 1819 and 1920, which would be reflect, uh, which be reflected in another budget as a negative. We also increased considerably our BOSI services in 1430. And that's from 1819 to 2021. I'm sorry, from 1819 to 1920. And from 1920 to 2021, there are also some salary increases built in there. Additional increase in BOSI services. And we have a subservice that we use at this point that does provide us aid back. The cost varies. It has been more expensive, but that increase in expense is actually less. It's actually a decrease. You see it here as an increase. It's offset by revenue on the other side of the ledger. Records management. A lot of work is actually being done here behind the scenes to clean up things that have been in need of cleanup for some time, some archiving, et cetera. But we think we can do it with the monies that are budgeted there based on the fact that our actuals are typically a little bit less than what we budget, and sometimes a lot less than what we budget. Public information services. Primarily contractual there. Operation of plant. And those increases you see are anticipated salary increases. Equipment supplies, contracted services, together leading to that 123423, a little over 2%. Maintenance. Okay, so 1819 to 1920, you see a little decrease there. We were actually able to utilize some money that was thanks to savings in that department to do some sidewalk repair, et cetera. So if there is some cushion here, we can use it for, uh, for good work. And the increase you see from 1920 to 2021 does build in a number of, of employees here in terms of salary and supply increases. Uh, we've got to do more mandated testing that we, we've ever had to do before in terms of, um, lead and otherwise, things that need to be monitored a lot more carefully in districts across the state than they used to be. And repairs and 50, 60-year-old buildings. Uh, this is something we may also look at in terms of one salary, which may not, there's a position that's been open, and we may leave it open. And if that's the case, this will come down to a certain degree as well. Security. Again, security, recall that our negotiations with them date back to 1819, so that does reflect some of that in there. From 1920 to 2021. And our new, um, visitor management systems are also something that needs to be reflected more comprehensively now. So at each building, we have that system in place where you've got to provide a license, uh, Raptor, et cetera. You've got to go through that process. It does come with a cost. 1680. We did move costs between 1819 and 1920 into this cost, into this cost center. The difference between the two top numbers has to do with our tech, um, tech supervisor, for lack of a better term. His salary was moved into this code, and the tech overtime was moved into this code as well. That's why you see such a big jump from 1819 to 1920. Would, it would be reduced from 2,000 codes that you'll see in an upcoming presentation. And we do believe we can shave off nearly $6,000 between this year and next year, based on what's there now. You saw this already in a previous slide. Same numbers. 1920, school association dues are built into their own category. Flat. This you saw before. Includes both salaries, pensions, benefits, as well as the operational costs. The 8370 is a repeat from a previous slide. And that is your 1,000 summary once again. We do not. They provide us with, uh, well, with two things each year. They provide us with a cost increase, and they will provide us with a refund, which will go on to the revenue side of things, uh, down the, down the road a little bit. So we will get some money back each year, and you get money back based on what you spend, so it's expense-based revenue. They do try to control the cost there. They are not a, um, they are not an entity that receives any aid. They don't have, uh, they don't have their own budget per se. They receive money from their component districts. So we're a member of Western Suffolk, the Western Suffolk BOSI's consortium. They are funded primarily through the services that are needed in all 18 districts that feed into Western Suffolk BOSI's. So we determine what they, what they get and what they do. And again, the benefits there. We get aid back on most of what we do with them. Okay, and that leads us really quickly. Transportation. So we have a current Huntington coach contract, which we've been signing for one year. It's set to expire at the end of this year. 52 buses, 82 vans. I believe that's down one of each from last year. And recall that we're not just taking a bus and having it go from high school to bus yard and back. We have packages that usually run through three schools. We did receive, and it's in your update, I believe from last week, a proposed agreement for 2021. for twenty twenty-one with Huntington Coach that includes the increase aligned with this, the transportation CPI, which we will have in hand a little bit later in the budget process. But for us, they know our district, they know our terrain, they know our, our routes already. It makes sense for us to continue with them. There aren't that many out there, and they have a very high safety rating, which is something that they pride themselves on, and we take pride in as well.
Did we once have a concept come out to show us how we can save money on routes?
So...
Do you have time to do that here?
He comes every year at this point. John Robertson is part of our process, um, and Huntington Coach has, has gotten used to him, and they have learned to work together well. He will look at pretty much every route at the end of a year as we look into the, to the next year, and he'll help us route for the next year. Anything I missed there? Kathy? We're...
We have them every year.
Excellent. Okay, so forty-eight sixty-seven eligible for transport daily. That's eight district schools, twenty-seven private parochial schools, which is actually down, uh, from the previous year, thirty special need school, it's, the school's actually up a little bit. So all transportation, and there are requirements that must be met here, but they are entitled to this, and we must provide it. So this is what it looks like in the composite, a little under two percent. I will tell you, having experienced it in both ways, it is, I'm going to say, much less of a hassle and no more expensive to work with contracted transportation services. There are some things that you can't control, but our transportation office is very small. It is, um, there's not much in there in terms of people or things needed, because we contract everything out. So notice there's not much there in general, and that reflects a, a piece of a person who is going to be there full-time next year, and some overtime that's needed for beginning and, um, rare occurrences throughout the year. And TransFinder, our transportation software is also in this code. It's New York State A-able. There is an increase in that built in here as well. And this is primarily Huntington Coach. Day buses, special ed, athletics, music, late buses, daily rentals, et cetera. I know we've talked about late buses, it's been a topic of conversation, but here's what we're looking at in terms of contracted transportation, and we've had the conversation many times that if we do offer late buses, more late buses or late buses at a particular school, we've got to do it for every school that our private and parochial school students attend as well, should they desire it, and that could become quite costly. Couple of things in the BOSI's transportation category. Greenkill, generally offset by students, and Heffie has been a big supporter there. Athletic tournaments, playoffs that are going out of the area, marching band state competition up at Syracuse. We contract these buses through Eastern Suffolk BOSI's, primarily coach buses. Flat. All right, so bringing back the numbers that you saw at the beginning, and notice this is a moving, this is a work in progress, a moving target until we, we finish this process on April twentieth. So it is important that people do not walk out of here today assuming that our budget will end up at that one thirty-eight, two eighty-six, five sixty-one. We have weeks to do what we need to do. It is a process. It is no different, uh, in terms of time than it has been in previous years, but understand that our target right now is the bottom row. And again, there will be some decisions that have to be made. This is a place we don't want to be, but if we were ever to be in a position where we could not add a dollar to the tax levy and not take advantage of any exclusions, we'd have to cut over four and a half million. All the equipment comes out. Not that we want the equipment to come out, but if you pull the equipment out, that's still almost another four million that has to be found. And this is what we look like between now and the end. That was pretty quick for eighty, eighty, eighty-nine slides. All right, I believe the next meeting is a workshop.
It is.
And at that meeting, we'll look at capital proposals for twenty twenty-one as well.
Does anybody have any other questions? I was kind of asking mine as we went along, although I probably shouldn't do that because it never gets recorded, but did anybody have any further questions? I know, but I'm like right in the way, so. No, I guess we're all good, Jim. Thank you very much. And I know you've got a lot more work to do, but just an initial thank you to you and your team, because I know this is a huge job, and we really appreciate how thorough you, the job you do of it.
Well, we have tremendous support from Dr. Acker at the business office, and a lot of people that are working tirelessly, tirelessly to get this, to get this done and to look at basically every penny that goes into this.
Well, it's no wonder, because it's a huge job. I'm sure it takes a lot of eyes and a lot of hours, so. All right, I guess that's going to bring us to curriculum and instruction, so that's to Ms. McFoy.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves CSE, CPSC submissions as delineated.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion for that? Christine, and a second from Xavier. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, we're right back to you. Sorry, Jim.
Okay, no breath, no rest for the weary.
Yeah, no rest for the weary.
Okay, I'm asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, thirteen, and twenty-two.
All right, we've all got that. Can I get a motion from Tom, and a second from Michelle? Any questions, comments? All in favor? That's everybody.
Do you want to make one quick announcement here?
Go for it.
Okay, you have, um, thank, uh, thank you for approving this evening, and this will be celebrated in September, but I would like to acknowledge, and I can't see if she's here. I can't see that far. Yes, I can see her. Sandy Ramos has been teaching speech for us for a number of years now. She is absolutely terrific, um, and I don't say that lightly. We're happy to have her here, period, and very happy to grant her tenure this evening.
Oh, congratulations. That's always a nice reason to be here.
And she had to suffer through my budget presentation. Was it worth tenure?
And look, she's still smiling, so, I mean, that says a lot. You really did move. I'll give you credit tonight. Dr. Acker?
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through P on this evening's business agenda.
Okay, can I get a motion for that? Uh, Christine, and a second is Michelle. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
We have several donations. Lucky for us, we have so many tonight. The first one is from the Huntington Booster Club, presenting a donation of a high school gym scores table and a high school stadium chair. Forty-eight hundred and thirty-four hundred.
We want you to be comfortable. It's important.
So we thank the Booster Club for that generous donation.
Thank you.
Once again, a donation from Installnet International, desks, file cabinets, chairs, and, uh, thanks to George for picking it up, I'm assuming.
They've got to be running out pretty soon.
It's all in the up and up. I don't want you to think there's anything funny going here.
Excellent, so thank you for that generous donation as well. And we have a donation from Mr. and Mrs. Joseph Marquez, um, of two hundred arts smocks to Southown Primary School with a value of a hundred and fifty-two dollars. I'm sure that will be put to great use. Thank you so much for that. And we have a donation from the Teflon family, a donation of graphically designed four-by-eight-foot full-color vinyl banner with grommets for Jack Abrams STEM Magnet School. It's valued at four hundred and fifty dollars, and that's a very generous donation as well.
Prototype is hanging outside, if you'd like to take a look.
Oh.
On your right.
And our final donation is from Ms. Lisa Tyne, uh, a donation of a flute to the Huntington School District Music Department with a value of two hundred dollars. So thank you to all our generous donors tonight.
All right, that brings us to our second public commentary section. Anyone?
No.
Nothing from James tonight, nothing from anyone. All right, that brings us to our closing remarks by board members. Does anybody want to close with anything? No, then I'm, no?
No, go get them.
I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, my friends. Michelle, and second from Tom, all in favor? Thank you very much, everyone. Get home safely.